To come on in.
I'm here.
Oh, okay, good. I was just typing.
Do you want me to get started?
Yes, go ahead. Keep your mind, I need to find the, uh...
The blueprint and I can post it, guys. It's on Blackboard.
I got her done. Yay. You're so awesome. Yeah, you say that now. All right. So, um... I T P.
It's high blood?
Yeah.
Can you turn off the student mic and mute it? We can, we can like hear them.
Is that better?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, well, I didn't know they were making any noise, but, okay, we got her. All right, I T P, what is it? It's silence. I T P, what is it? Does anybody know what I T P is? Um, but they just said idiopathic thrombocytopenia. Good. So, what do we know about it? Because of, I don't know. What else? Platelet cell low, someone said, good. What does thrombocytopenia mean? Platelet cell low, right? What else? What does that mean? When you say platelet cell low, what does that look like? What are the symptoms? Bleeding easy, good. Bruise, good. High risk for infection. Why would you say they're at high risk for infection? They don't have the platelets necessarily affect infection, white blood cells, mine. So, if we know that they bleed easily, and they're gonna have bruises, what's another thing that they can have on their scan that you can see? The T P I or the other word that's part of that P, what it used to be known as? Pupera. Right? So...
Ecomusus?
Huh?
Ecomusus?
You know, it's a bruising, yeah, good. So, what are some things that we're going to do? What are, what are we going to do for this patient?
They like supportive care or prevent bleeding, you can do IVIG, prednisone, anti-D, anti-Boeider, so we talked about that medication.
Good. So, with IVIG, your anti-D and prednisone, there are some potential adverse reactions I would be familiar with, things that you need to make sure you're educating on. Okay? Adverse reactions, things parents need to, or guardians need to be aware of. What are some teachings that we can do?
Injuries.
Injuries.
They're like more body, or you have...
And so we want to prevent injuries, we want to make sure they have helmets and bikes, or on bikes and U pads and things like that. But in this particular, is this typically a problem? Or is it self limiting?
Self limiting.
It is self limiting. So it might be that we would prefer them to do what?
Quiet activity, restrict sports until it resolves.
Good. Play quiet activity. And let it resolve. What's another thing that we might teach? What are some bleeding, preventional, prevention, whatever? Good again?
Soft bristle toothbrush.
Good, soft bristle toothbrush, what else?
No ragers.
No sharp, straight ragers. You can have electric ragers.
Beat vitamin K. Or increase your vitamin K.
Well, you do want them to have a very nutrient-rich diet. I don't know that increasing their intake of vitamin K is going to help a whole lot. Okay? So, we can carry that over with hemophilia as well, right? Because what is hemophilia?
Lack of clotting factors.
Lack of, lack of a clotting factor, one, two, what, eight, factor eight, whatever. Okay, same type of teachings with precautions for bleeding. Would we want these kids to be in contact sports?
No.
No. What are some signs of internal bleeding?
Pain, injury, circulation, hours.
They've got low blood pressure, powders, pain, bleeding pain, diuretic. What if they have brain bleed?
Sleepy level or consciousness.
Yeah, what does that look like?
Confused, dizzy, sleepy.
Confused, sleepy.
Unravelled.
Good. So, remember when you have I T P and you have hemophilia and you have those risks for bleeding, right?
Did you say it?
Yep. These are things that we want to make sure that we're educating our clients and their family members on, things to watch for. If they get in a car accident, if they fall off their bike, and those are things that we want to make sure that we are looking for and monitoring, and we want them to speak medical assistance. Blood transfusion, this is a skill. I know what you need to know about blood transfusion. Now I perform that skill from A to Z, everything from C. Probably is that. Single cell. What is it? Different shaped blood cells. Is that what you said?
I said misshaped, but yeah.
Misshaped, okay. I heard blood cells.
They're not round.
Okay, what's it, what does it cause? Pain. Pain and?
My little clotting.
Clotting, which causes a lack of oxygen to the tissues, good. So what do we need to know about it? What are our symptoms outside of pain?
Like chest syndrome?
You have to watch for chest syndrome, yes. What else?
The things that throw them into a crisis.
Good, very good, I'd be familiar with what can possibly cause a crisis. What about what we do in a crisis? So sometimes when I'm talking to my students in clinical and I ask about care plans, one of the things that gets missed a lot as far as what do you do for something is assessment. That's our first step as a nurse. You know, baseline, right? So make sure that you're thinking about baseline and treatment and what you need to know before you start treatment, with all of these things, prioritization, right? You gotta have baseline before you can move on. Single cell, what do we do in a crisis? What do we start with? Where do we go?
Low levels of normal oxygen.
Okay, so...
Pain medication.
Those are all things that we do. We do fluids. We do pain medication.
What we have in medicine? Oxygen.
Right.
And would you want to use like an antiplatelet?
We may administer, we actually, the biggest thing you can do, the best thing that you can do for a single cell crisis is administer fluids. Get that, get that blood less thick and that clot will break up. That vasodillic crisis will break up.
Are these patients going to be on anticoagulants?
Not, well, we have to be careful because, um, they don't have a lack of, or too many, or things that would, not generally, that's not one of the generalized things, we just want them to stay well hydrated and, and look for ways to prevent what causes a crisis. A lot of times those crises, you know, can be in joints, so we have to watch the joints and make sure they have adequate fluid intake. Because if you put them on anticoagulants, it really doesn't help a whole lot because these red blood cells are misshapen, it doesn't change anything, right? It's not because of clotting factors, it's not because of nutrient intake, it's, it's because of the misshapen cells, the blood cells, and anticoagulants end up wanting to help that. Hey, plastic academia.
I have a question.
Okay, go ahead.
Um, would we do oxygen prior to fluid administration? Because it's kind of like the least invasive, um, we do fluid administration first. We're putting oxygen on first because it's quicker than...
So the question here is, from what I understand, do you put oxygen on or an IV first? Is that your question?
Yes. That was my question as well, because last class, I think we were going through a slide that says oxygen is usually not a priority in a single cell crisis.
Yeah, well, that's true. And that's what I was thinking, that's why I was hesitating to answer, because I have my notes in front of me and I was, I was thinking about that. Um, I do believe, okay, so the thing with it is, again, the misshapen cells do not carry adequate oxygenation and the best thing that we can do, our priority, is to get fluids onboard to break up those clusters. Oxygenation at that point isn't going to help because the clot's still there. Until the clot lets up, we would, or breaks up, they would continue to have issues. Does that make sense? I mean, oxygen is a supportive therapy that we will do, just to get as much oxygen to them as we can. Um, and so once we get that broken up, it will help those red blood cells that are correctly shaped to carry the oxygen to the, to the tissues that have been infected. Okay? Um, so my thoughts are, you know, our priority is getting that IV and start fluid resuscitation, followed by oxygen and pain medicine. Did I answer your question? You did?
Yes, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
So oxygen is before pain medicine on priority.
Yeah, because oxygen's easy, pain medicine, you gotta forget it. Knock my boss, he can slap an O two, maybe a panel on pretty easily. And that's really all it is, it's a supportive measure. It's not... Yeah. Okay, um, eh, plastic academia. What is it? Let's go to the top wall. What is this top wall? They're thinking.
You said low levels?
Low levels of all blood cells.
Very good. Low numbers for all types of blood cells. No red blood cells, no white blood cells, no platelets. Damn, nothing. We're gonna have all kinds of issues with that, right? Bleeding, oxygenation.
Infection.
Infection, absolutely. Good. Hold on just a second. Miss Briggs, can you, I gotta go take care of my freshman issue, can you go for a minute?
Absolutely. Okay, guys, looking at the blueprint and the things that we just learned over the last two days. Scoliosis, we talked about that being a problem in the spine. Um, I would be familiar to, with the, the nursing parts of that, which I talked about screening, how you do a screening, um, post-op care, that kind of thing. Any other questions on that one? It's so hard, when you just gave a lecture, it's like, um, we're brain dead. Traction and cast care, we put them in traction because they either have a severe enough break that it needs time to heal or we're waiting for surgery. So just remember, there's different types of traction. There's some that has pin care, that's your skeletal traction, and there's some that is just skin traction, which is where they just wrap it and pull away. But the whole purpose is for pain control and to help the bone. I'll slow down, I had two cups of coffee today. Cast care, and I had several posters over cast care, so I know you guys understand about cast care. So read the questions and answer what it's asking and do not add to the question. Your usually simplest answer. Sprains versus fractures, the different way we treat them. Remember your neurovascular assessment on all of these things. With a lot of the sprains, they have an injury, we want to rest it, but we also want to move it. So we don't want to put stress on it, we're gonna watch how they're walking. Uh, not, uh, non-white bearin' is what we call it. Or if it's on an arm, we're gonna put it in the sling so that it's at a neutral position. That weird one, the F C E, the one where the femur, the head slides off? No, 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 this is... Yeah, that's supposed to be the swift capital, I didn't get the swift on the front of it. Okay. And then the osteosarcoma, which is your bone cancer. Now, Osgood's slatter, we covered that in sprains and sprangs, and that was a repetitive sports injury where the, it's the avulsion or the chipping away of the ligaments and tendons and sometimes the bone, so it's usually in the knee. Um, it's a sports injury. We're gonna treat it by resting it.
That's great, what was that one again?
This last one I said was Osgood's slatter disease. That's in your sports injuries. It doesn't have its own little paragraph, it's actually put in with the others, I'm trying to find a page number on that one. I may have to look that up while Mrs. H is talking, but it's in your book and it's listed under the sports injuries and the repetitive, uh, non, uh, repetitive injuries, micro tears and that sort of thing. The leg cave curtsies, named Seth Baird, remember, he's the one who had the femoral head that had the necrosis on it and we rested for a long time. They may have surgery, but we're wanting to keep that hip in the socket so it can get the blood supply and heal. Duchenne's muscular dystrophy, that was that last one we covered. Um, where we want to, is there's no cure, and that's the muscle wasting and our goals are to keep them as independent for as long as possible. Hip dysplasia, and I had a couple of students, or at least one student, that wrote in that their daughter had it and the doctor even said they didn't think that she would walk, that she has played softball, so yeah, she'd be bad. So they don't always know everything. And so hip dysplasia is a congenital problem where the hip does not see right into the socket and so we have to put them in that four ball that will cast, or sling, that keeps their hips abducted and in a neutral position so that it can heal. Marfan syndrome, we did not cover that and there's really, I don't remember. I have, I may have to look that up and see, because I don't remember that being in there. So I'll have to look that up and get back to you guys. I will post something to Blackboard if there's a question on it.
I don't think there is, I think I forgot to remove that one, sorry.
Okay, because I, I thought I took that one out, I was like, oh, we're not covering that one. That's one of those weird, weird, weird ones that is kind of fun to talk about.
Oh, right, mark that out, guys. I forgot to make it, I'm sorry.
That's okay, thank you for coming in and telling me that. Clubfoot, we talked about that, another congenital problem where there's a series of castings to get those ankles back. Usually it's bilateral, but it can be juvenile bilateral. So you're gonna look at cast care. You're trying to keep that child so that that ankle gets where it's supposed to be. Juvenile arthritis, yep, there's edema hearts, I would guarantee you there's probably something on there about edema heart and juvenile arthritis. Why do we give, why do we give it? And what do we need to know about it? That's in your book. And then living with arthritis also, how to teach them because it hurts, keeping them moving. Child abuse, what is our, what is our purpose in that? We're to identify and document. Okay, question?
A lot of questions that we're talking about, some of them on the day study desk. Do you document first and report or report and document?
I always document first because you're gonna forget. I always document first.
That would write down, but it's saying that her report.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm saying I document first.
Document first, so is that like when you have a pri, priority, document and then report?
Yeah, for me it is. Because you get distracted and then you cannot remember what actually happened and you're just rushing through it, so I try to write it down if I don't, just jot a note or something.
I mean, that's what I got when, when I, we have that question, we want to document first because we want to document, be completely accurate.
Right.
Be made documented and it's not gonna be...
That's right, it's your legal, legal document. Um, child abuse? And someone did a really good poster on that, it was really good, it, it kind of actually made my little heart skip. You guys are really talented, by the way, you should, I, I didn't show you mine, it's really sad. Um, I'm not as creative. Um, health promotion, I talked about nutrition, rest on several of these. Just use your common sense, remember your developmental stages. All children need three meals and two healthy snacks. That was our generic principle back in nutrition lecture. They need to be resting, um, getting sleep at nighttime, that kind of thing. Okay, that's me, okay, I'm, uh, back to you, Mrs. H.
All right, we were on eh, plastic academia. What is it, what do we do for it? What are the symptoms? Um, be familiar with those things. Again, we gotta watch these kids because they could bleed, they could have infection, they could, I mean, just about anything that they have trouble breathing because they're gonna have low red blood cells. So all of those things are possible with these kids, so we need to be taking care of them and be very supportive in our care. HIV and AIDS, there's a couple of medications that are down in there, you'd be familiar with. Guys, recognize that your resource for medications is your drug guide that came, that you bought. It's not the internet, it's not other sources, it's your drug guide. So when you go through and look for adverse reactions, I would flip through my drug guide for those. I call drug indications, I would, you know, teaching, that kind of stuff. Flip through your drug guide, that's your best resource. Um, know, in your textbook, there's a couple of pictures, or a couple of boxes, twenty-eight point something, and that talk about, um, common conditions with HIV, like oral candidiasis. And then there's a list that says AIDS defining. So what are some conditions that will indicate that the child has progressed from HIV to AIDS? I would be familiar with those two things, what are common? And what brings us to an AIDS diagnosis? And then the medications that are listed down there, I would know, like I said, contraindications, adverse reactions, and the teaching, nursing implications. Also HIV, AIDS, leukemia, those that can have some issues. You see the immunizations is down there, and make sure you know which ones are live and which ones are safe to give for someone that's immunocompromised. Know your lab values for all of the blood ones, know your blood component lab values, hemoglobin, hematocrit, platelet, white blood cells, so that you know if there's an issue. White blood cell, red blood cell, hemoglobin, hematocrit. You might also know P T, P T T and I R R. Because that's, I'm hemophilia goes by those. And leukemia and chemotherapy. Low, um, resistance to bacteria, their white blood cells aren't effective. So know how, what education, what reverse isolation looks like. Um, how do you do clustered care when you have a child that's tired? With all of these, how do we protect, educate? Okay, I've talked about that already, education that we need to get parents to protect these kids, whether it's low white blood cell count, low platelet count, low whatever. How do we protect our kids? How do we teach our guardians to take care of them? I think that's pretty much it. Pharmacology, um, there's a number of things listed down there at the bottom, be familiar with them. Um, priority and delegation. Um, there's been a lot of questions, I mean, if you look, there's four, that's a number for this test, so, and think about what your prioritization is and what you can and can't delegate. If you count up, there's fifty-two questions, that's because I've included the bonus in there. So one of these topics is not like the others, no. That's a joke. Um, so that's it, guys. Just saying, there's fifty-two, that's, that's why. And then I will take that Marfan syndrome out, it was not on the test. I just forgot to delete it while I was working with the blueprint. Um, any questions for me? Make sure you use discussion board. Again, guys, you all have my cellphone number, if you don't have my cellphone number, go into Blackboard and on the test thing where it says cellphone number, you know, call me on my cell if you have any issues with your test and put it in your phone. So if I don't check, because I'm going on Thanksgiving break too.
That was gonna be my next question, are you guys gonna check discussion board over Thanksgiving break?
We will intermittently check discussion board. I can't think a hundred percent that we're gonna check it every day, all the time. But if you shoot us a text message, Ms. Briggs or I either one, and say, hey, or if you have a question for Ms. Briggs and you just send it to me, I'll, I'll let her know, I'll get on board.
Okay, thank you.
But please don't bug me on Thanksgiving, because I don't want to go there and I think.
Oh, my brother just dropped out from Texas to do that.
Just don't get hurt because I'm on call Thanksgiving and I really want to spend it with my family.
I don't, I don't plan on getting hurt.
I don't even know if I actually go there, I usually do. You should.
All right, guys.
Yeah.
Um, have a wonderful break. Please, take some time to breathe and enjoy your family. Um, after, um, Thanksgiving, I probably will be sending out an announcement or two, uh, tomorrow about when we come back. Guys, if you have not told me that you can't test at home, you need to let me know today. Okay? If you have, thank you. If you haven't, let me know today, please. Um, I think that's about it, yes?
All right, if we're testing on campus, do we just show up like normal, about twenty minutes ahead of the test and?
If you're testing on campus, yes, you just show up at your normal time, fifteen, twenty minutes before. Now, on the final, I did put on the final, that if you're coming to campus for the final, you need to plan to be here at eight AM for the final.
Okay, I missed that, okay, thank you.
So, if you're testing on campus, the final will begin at eight AM on that day, December eighth.
December?
Go ahead.
December eighth at eight o'clock, so be there around four or two.
Sure, we may not be here, but you can be. I'm an eight, eight, if I can be there at eight AM, I'll be there at eight AM.
That'd be perfect, that's great, I could wait.
Everybody, Miss Briggs maybe, you know, or, or Miss Phillips, I don't know, but. That's me. Um, so, yeah, I'll be sending out some announcements about that. And then as we get closer to the next, and we're gone.
So, uh, since we're doing it at home, it start, we log on at nine AM just like we would here.
That's fine. Yeah, I'll send out an announcement.
So, what if something goes wrong?
Yeah.
And since we have to do like our, our work space and stuff like that. Can they add like an extra five minutes to the exam?
No.
No?
Whatever.
Everybody else has been scanning their space, or like they're supposed to be. Um, I know some haven't done any stuff.
So, when we scan our space, like, do we just pull up the monitor thing so we can watch ourselves do it? Because when I was doing it, I didn't realize we could pull up that monitor thing.
You could pull up.
So, or like pull up to make sure you're in the middle of it? And I don't even know what I scanned.
I don't know what I scanned either, I literally just took it and like went around and pointed it out there. I was like, I think this is good.
And I'm here like this little, so I'm like, oh, they got it all. The mirror, I'm like, God, I can't see nothing in that camera. I see there's a mirror there, but I can't see anything.
And we hold up our post-it note or do we like stick on the desk and when we scan the desk?
Hold it up in front of the camera and flip it over.
Oh, okay.
Where we can go outside.
Okay.
And as far as you can do that, but typically, what I would suggest is you take up your device or laptop and you just flip it over and it goes all the way around where your desk and your floor and your chairs. Hold it up all the way around this way and all of the room.
I'm more worried about technological failure.
Yeah, me too.
Rather than.
Like, what if it just falls in the middle of it?
And we just immediately call you and say, hey, we lost it.
And, okay, so.
You can't tell, we're all anxious.
Couple of different things to know about exam. You download your exam beforehand, okay? You're actually not connected when you take it, they have to reconnect. You reconnect after, when you're done, and upload.
Okay. What if it doesn't upload?
Then you, if it doesn't upload, then I'll tell you to come to campus, like you have bad wifi.
Yep.
I'll tell you to go to a place where you have good wifi or come to campus. You can sit out in the parking lot and upload it.
Okay.
Because you have good wifi.
So, it won't just like disappear, it'll just?
No, it will not disappear, okay.
Oh, we're okay now.
You are.
That makes it okay. It just won't disappear, I guess.
Everything's okay.
And that's why I'm going to just stop working and everything.
Yeah, the main thing is you upload it before, so it'll be out there and I'll send a, an announcement that says the exam is ready to be uploaded. We usually, I try to do that twenty-four hours in advance, so you have time to go in and if you have any problems, you can go back in. Make sure everybody update exam supplies. They have another update go through.